All right, good evening everyone. Welcome to tonight's study session of the City of Casa Grande. First item on the agenda tonight is a presentation and discussion concerning the scope and anticipated operation of Project Coach. Mr. Rains?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. We'll start this study session by, number one, apologizing for the format that we're having to use, but obviously, under the circumstances with the virus, we're taking extreme precautions. And I know that the Project Coach representatives are certainly very aware of that, and we've asked them to join us via the conference line. Also, on the call is Councilwoman Cortson. So, we should, what I would like to do for the benefit of everybody in the room is perhaps ask each individual to identify themselves, and I know that's going to be difficult because they're all going to want to talk at once, but we'll start with Councilwoman Cortson. If she, if, are you still on the line, Mary?
Yes, I am.
Tom Tureen, are you on the line?
I am, right there.
And who else do we have? I know we have Hal from Project Coach. Are there, is there anybody else on the line from Project Coach?
Yes, Hal Buckner here, and I think George Edwards is with us. George?
Yes, George Edwards.
Perfect. Well, we appreciate you bearing with us this evening, as we, I think it is probably the first time that we've covered an update on a project via this, this technology. But, so Tom, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand the baton to you at this point, and let you introduce yourself and begin the overview of the, of what you're here to speak about tonight.
Well, thank you so much, and let me say that I am really sorry it's not to be there, A, because I like being there, and B, because I'm dying to get out of my house. And, and I don't know how long we could have been stuck here, but I, thank you, I'm sorry, Hal Buckner is with us, Al is our chief operating officer at Matero, and Al's in Houston, because we have, for the time being, shut down, down travel in the company. I'm in Phoenix, and quite easily could have driven down, but I'm trying to set a good example for everybody else in the company and, and not, not doing things in person that we can do electronically. Let me start with just a, an introduction to the project. Matero is planning to build a, a $3.3 billion natural gas to gasoline conversion facility on property that we intend to annex to Casta Grand, that is just across from the Tito Lake land, on, on the other, other side of the, the highway and, and the railroad. We have a thousand acres, just over a thousand acres under option, and the facility will be taking pipeline natural gas, gas that's not produced in Arizona, but comes through Arizona in Texas. The pipelines are in place, we require only a short lateral to, to bring the gas to our facility. And so, we're, we're making use of existing infrastructure, which greatly reduces the disruption of building something like this, and, and, and we're right on rail, which is essential, because we will make, let's not finish gasoline. The gasoline that we produce will be ready for use, which means it will have the ethanol additive which is required by federal law, and it will have the other additives that we need to put in to meet Arizona standards. It will be, which is referred to as a drop-in fuel, it will be usable in today's cars and trucks without modification, and we anticipate that it will be sold without any additional cost. One great advantage, of course, is it will be made in Arizona, and for the first time Arizona will have a measure of gasoline independence, security, if you will, because as everyone knows, there's no gasoline made in the state right now. When a pipeline has a problem, or refinery in California, Texas has a problem, prices spike, and sometimes, you know, the pumps get, get, get shuttered, as happened recently with Circle K. So, it'll be an in-state source of gasoline, it'll be a drop-in fuel, it'll be, customers, you know, won't have to change their behavior, won't buy new equipment, won't trade into cars and trucks. But it's a better fuel, in that it has a smaller environmental, a smaller, excuse me, carbon footprint. And the reason for that is that when you make gasoline from natural gas, you don't produce the byproducts that are part of making gasoline crude oil. It takes two barrels of, of crude oil to make one barrel of gasoline. The other barrel goes off into other stuff, some of the jet fuel, some of the pet coke, it all lines up being used. Many of those products have renewable substitutes that get prodded out upon using synthetic gasoline and crude oil. When you make gasoline from natural gas, there aren't many of those unwanted byproducts. And as a result, we will avoid the production of byproducts that otherwise would put over five million tons a year of carbon in the atmosphere. That's as much carbon as maybe five million automobile. And in Arizona, there are various numbers that I see, but let's say there are around three million vehicles, cars in Arizona, so it'd be effectively like eliminating the carbon from, sort of the cars in, in the state, all without any additional cost, which is really neat. There's another environmental advantage from what we're doing, and that is that our gasoline will have no sulfur. Gasoline in the United States today has a limitation of 10 parts per million sulfur, and, and, you know, the refinery in Texas would require a lot of trouble to get down to 10 parts per million. Because natural gas essentially has no sulfur in it, and what little bit there is will stream out at the front end of our process, our gasoline will have zero sulfur. And what that will do is make today's cars, they've all got catalyst converters, and anything anywhere near, near recent, it'll make those catalyst converters work much better, and as a result, there will be fewer pollutants that will get into the localized sphere, and there will, and the, and the catalyst converters will be much more efficient in preventing the creation of the, of the chemicals, the pollutants, which are the precursors of ground level ozone. Now, we want ozone up in the atmosphere to protect us from all the violence, but on the ground, we don't want it. It's a, it's a harmful pollutant for damage, but it's also limiting development in Arizona, because the state is, in many places, particularly in, in Nortoka County, is up against its limit in terms of the amount of ground level ozone that's permitted, and that's restricting expansion of business. Intel, we're told, for example, is having difficulty expanding because it doesn't have a source of oxygen. The, the Department of Environmental Quality has determined that our process, the introduction of our gasoline, will have a material effect on ground level ozone, and they believe that's going to provide a new source of oxygen. They're very excited, they've got a wonderful quote from the director, they've run, they've run analysis themselves, and conclusions that they reach. So, we're very excited about the, the environmental issues, which, which don't come of additional costs. So often, really, anything we do to help the environment is used very costly here, just in terms of the process. And instead of gasoline, we believe we're going to be able to sell at a competitive price, so that we won't, we won't be hitting the price with it in, in the, in the gasoline order, and having to buy new pieces of equipment. Thinking about it locally, this facility is going to produce, it's kind of a quarter, 2,000 workers during construction, which will take at least three years, Hal, you can correct me on that, during construction to build the facility, and we're hoping to begin construction in about a year when we're through permitting and doing, with the elements we have to do. And after construction, there will be 265 permanent operating jobs. We anticipate that the average salary will be $90,000 a year, and we're really intent on, on developing many people in the region locally for this job. We're anticipating a joint training program with Central Arizona College, and joint programs with the university, to just squeeze as much benefit out of this as we can locally in terms of employment, because we don't have our employees to be community. We intend to be good neighbors, we're a company with a kind of a deep philosophy and commitment. We really enjoy the relationships that we've developed during this last year, that we've been, we've been talking with leaderships and, and residents in Casta Grand and, and the area, and, and we're quite excited about, about the prospects of, of joining the community. George Andrews, who is in charge of, made a part of the design of the facility, is intending to move to Casta Grand, and live his life in, settle there and run the facility. Those of you who know George, I think will, will, will be very happy by that, it's just a terrific guy. We are very concerned about safety. We are designing, taking into the facility from the outset. We are able to do things today, because it's modern, it's not as fine, it's much, much less complex process than a refinery, it's a catalytic process, but we'll let Hal explain that here in a moment. But we're very, we're very serious about, and we're trying to do things in terms of safety that you just couldn't do in the past. And it's, as I said, it's, it's part of our culture, it's something we really care about, and it's something we're doing from the very beginning, we've already met with, with the officials in, in the city involving them in our planning, and in the training. We have our own fire department, our own police department, we look forward to being co-respondents with our partner in the city and county, and adding significantly to, you know, to the capability. Visually, and I'm sorry I'm not there, I can't show you the picture of it, but visually, it's not going to be much seeing, because we're gonna, the, as I said, our, our site of a thousand acres, of the facility, of the, the facility itself, the natural gas to gasoline facility itself, the tenets and whatnot, the rail private, that'll take up about 300 of the whole trim, 58 of the truck. The rest of the property is going to have a photovoltaic solar plant on it, because all of our peak power, electricity is going to come from our onsite solar. The, and that, this brings me around to the water story, which is one of the things we're most proud of. This facility is going to be net water target, and the reason for that is that the facility itself produces two and a half gallons of water for every gallon of gasoline. It, this isn't, this isn't recycling, it's not desalination, it actually makes it, and again, I'll let Hal explain that in a minute, how that happens. That's 80% of the water that the facility needs to offer us. So, 80% of the water the facility actually will make itself. The other 20%, which is only a thousand acre feet a year of water, we're going, we're negotiating a deal that's going to be before you, I think, leave in this work session, to, to get from, to purchase from the city, from the wastewater treatment plant, that's going to, and that'll make up the rest of our, of our, really, of our vacuum loss. There will be no discharge, there will, there will be no settling pond, no evaporation pond, it will all be contained, get handled through that system. But what we will wind up doing is leaving in the ground, the bathtub, the 4,000, 4,500, whatever it is, acre feet of water that's currently used to grow our capital on, on our thousand acres. So, from this point of view of the, of the, of the offer, we'll be adding 4,500 acre feet here at the offer, 1,000 acre feet that we get from the city, I think it's considered by most people a renewable resource, and as I said, we'll be making the rest of our water. So, that's, those are the outlines of the project. It's, 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 it's very neat idea, we don't, wonderfully, you know, the technology, the system that we're using, it's not, there's no, there's no technology risk, the exact same system came online last summer, at the exact same scale, we have the rights to that, that technology in the United States, as a continental United States. And our, and we work very closely with, with the technology and, and catalyst, catalyst supply, they're based in Norway, and we've had a lot of interaction with them. But that's the outline, Hal, why don't you, you know, take, take them through a little bit of the, of the technical aspect and, and the engineering team.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tom, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, and Council. Like Tom said, I wish we were there tonight, I'd be with you, but we'll, we'll make do with the systems gap. The, the, the technology that Tom talked about, it is, it's actually not from Norway, it's from Denmark.
Oh, geez, I'm sorry. Am I in the name?
It's close by, it's close by, but, but it's a company by the name of Holtertop, a very well-known company in the, in the oil and gas industry, very well-recognized company, long tradition of, of developing new technologies, and, and they have developed this technology, as we call it, we call it the new oil technology, because it was first invented back in the 1980s. Some of you remember the oil that part of it, when we, when we were looking for alternatives to gasoline from, from crude oil, basically, they, they developed this technology, but never commercialized it, because we found crude oil, and it's been abundant since then. But basically, this technology takes natural gas, combines it with an oxygen stream, and makes methanol, and then the methanol is converted to gasoline. That, that's really the process, it's a one, one-through process, straight-through process. The coproduct of, of, of the gasoline is, is water, as Tom talked about. We actually, there's some hydrogen and oxygen left over from the chemical reaction, they combine to make water, and basically, that is our, our recycled water that we internally recycle. You've heard George, George is leading the process team, he has been in Copenhagen for much of the past couple of months, bringing that technology from Copenhagen to the U.S., but the part of the process has been really actualizing the technology in Arizona. In other words, making it fit the conditions we're in, both from the weather, but also from water conservation, and, and Tom talked about the water conservation story. But, but basically, our, our engineering team based in Houston has, has taken a real hard look at this process, and where we have heat generation, we need to cool it down, we're using air cooling instead of water cooling. So, we're really minimizing the, the amount of water usage in the system, and then, as Tom said, all of the water that's produced in the system, and all of the, all of the dirty water that comes out, we recompensate that water ourselves in a waste stream of facility inside of our fence line, and clean it up, and recycle it back to the front end as process, process water. And it's only deficient about a thousand acre feet a year, and, and we make that up, of course, with the, the city affluent, and we, we're really appreciative of that relationship and, that, that building, that relationship that's growing with your city engineer group, and, and, and how we will develop that together. It's very exciting. The other, the other aspect of, of this, we are onsite, going to, as Tom said, blend our own street-ready or road-ready or automobile-ready gasoline, we will, we will blend in the ethanol and, and all the acids that are required to make the right octanes for premium and regular, and, and meet the summer, winter vapor pressure requirements that are, that are, that are state mandated. So, so basically, we will have storage at the, at the back end of the facility, just like a terminal, and we'll also have our own truck rack. We will be bringing trucks in to pick the gasoline up and take it to local stations for, for, for being able to sell it into the market. This, we'll also be connected to rail, we'll have rail siding facility that brings in the ethanol from Midwest, and bring in some of the other components, we'll mix into the gasoline, make it the, the right specification for Arizona. So, so, so that's basically the, the facility and the layout. We'd be happy to try to answer any questions from, from the group tonight. Tom, George, and I are all available for questions.
I should add one thing, Hal, thank you, that was very helpful. I should want, add one thing, the, that we, that we didn't mention, we are, as part of this, hopeful to see an overpass built, over the highway and over the rail there, which we think will be, be very helpful to us, but also a real addition to this industrial technology corridor that, that, that's, that's developing, and actually, quite, quite a lot in it already, as part of the project. And the other thing I want to say, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, when we speak of, of, of using water, essence water from a treatment plant, that's our proposal, that is not approved by the city council, it's going to be before you. We have worked it through with the mayor and the staff, we think we have, have reached, you know, a good agreement, we think it's a, a wonderful deal for everybody, but that's, you know, that's yet to be approved, and we're hoping that you'll look favorably on that. Now, that was a good question, and, and, Mr. Mayor, as you were in the room at the beginning, I was thrown off not only by my geography, but by the fact that we're doing it less fondly, and I'm not listening to you guys, but, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, good evening.
Questions? Anybody have any questions?
Can I ask a question?
No, because I was going to call Lisa first.
Okay.
Sorry, Mary, okay. I know.
That wasn't.
Oh, okay. She had to make sure we were entertained, huh, Mary?
Yes, thanks, Mary.
Okay, so this is, is Lisa Fitzgibbons, and my question, and I, and I know we've brought this up in some of the meetings in the, in the past, but I just wanted to make sure we brought it out in public, although we're excited to have you here and to this point. I know it's been something that's, there's been a lot of discussion for, for many months now, so we're excited that we're at this point. But just to talk a little bit about the safety, I know it's something that will probably be a concern a little bit about the neighbors, you know, the citizens, so you mentioned that you're going to have your own fire unit, and I think you said police, in, in your presentation? Can you just give us a little bit of an idea of why that's necessary, and if that's going to be a long-term thing? Is it going to be something that's going to, you know, be there all, you know, as long as you're there, or, or just kind of give us a little idea of, of what that plan is?
Well, I should let, I should let George speak to that, or Hal, I'll just take that way, introduction, that take is very important to us, we have the ability to design and pass this state-of-the-art, and that, because the element is, this is a very expensive facility, and yet it will, it'll permanently have farm state protection, because it's, that $3.3 billion is three times larger than anything that's ever been built or proposed in the can, and so it's a lot of investment, and it's simply, you know, more of its own What we're able to do, though, because it's so expensive, the, the truth is, the, the safety piece, the farm piece and all that, relatively small percentage of the overall cost, so we, we think to do the very best, which is what we're doing. George, you're in charge of developing that, why don't you talk a little bit about, about extinguishing systems and the other stuff that we're planning to put in?
Yeah, sure, be glad to. Thanks for the opportunity again, and I'll just be the last maybe to apologize for not being there, or, certainly, we planned to do so, so we appreciate you bearing with us so we could participate by phone. In terms of the, of fire protection and having our own in-house fire department, as Tom mentioned, that is a long-term, and I'll call it a permanent thing, because basically, the, the key to keeping incidents small is initial response. So, if you have, you know, people on site that can respond with the proper tools and equipment as quickly as possible, then you have a very good chance of, of not even having anything that's a, a nominal, or, a, a significant火灾 incident. So, that's very important to us, obviously. The other thing it allows us to do is keep people on-site trained, and you don't just have a fire department that's trained in how to do have a fire department that's trained in how to do emergency response. It's really, all of the people who operate the facility should understand what they're capable of responding to, and then what you really need to call in help to do. And that first level of help would be the fire department. And then, of course, when you need to call in mutual aid, which is when we would count on the fire department from the city to come in. And with the proper training and joint training, we think we can have a very formidable approach to any incident that you may have. So that's on the fire department side. I'm going to just skip over real quick to the police department part, and I'm just going to re-characterize that as a security force. So what we want to do is make sure that we control access to the site 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week, 365-day-a-year operation. And we need to make sure that we protect our assets. We don't have people in the facility that don't belong there, that their credentials are trained properly, and anyone who's not trained in that manner needs to be assisted. So that's kind of the way we police, with police defense line, with people and then with cameras and other monitoring equipment. The safety piece that Tom introduced, well, is basically the idea that, given where we are right now in the early stages of basic engineering, and given the advances that have been made in some of the methods of firefighting, we feel that we've got a great advantage in how we lay out the site to space things out properly. And then also to add another layer of protection on top of that, which is an advanced firefighting phone that's been demonstrated to put out tank fires in just an extraordinary amount of time, within, I'll say, seconds, it's probably like a minute, versus some of the, you know, the tank fires that people may have seen that go on for a long period of time. We partnered with some great resources on fire protection. And then, if you put on top of that, the idea that controls has come such a long way since the last refinery was built, probably about 1970, I would say, there's really a great opportunity to control the process better, to keep it in the bounds of where it's supposed to operate, what we would define as safe operating limits. So that's where we feel we have a real strong advantage. So that's how I would kind of characterize those three assets, or those three aspects of security protection, fire response, and then safety.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, George, let me add one more, George. I think the other thing that's important to understand here is, we will implement a 24-hour-a-day maintenance crew for the facility. And our long-term planning, as we build more facilities, the maintenance would be centrally located there in Casa Grande, all the training would be there. We would do maintenance for all of our facilities out of the Casa Grande facility. But typically, in facilities like this, issues occur that go off of control or out of bounds as the terminology that George just used, because facilities aren't maintained. And we will have, you know, state-of-the-art maintenance teams on-site that are looking at preventive maintenance. So we're looking ahead of the game and not just waiting until something happens and then fix it. So we'll have a very progressive, very active preventive maintenance program established in each one of our facilities. Just wanted to add that to one point.
Thank you.
I want to add one other thing, as I met Hal. The references made to the six extinguishment, foam extinguishment systems, those systems are incredibly impressive. We've got videos and show you. But they're fixed in place, but they're already being each of the tanks and other facilities. You don't just have a team that attacks. They literally put out a fire in seconds, or in shorts.
Mary's next.
And, you know, what can be done now, which is entirely different than what can be done before. And on top of all that, not a refinery. Refineries are much more complex, operate with various parameters. This is a catalyst process that is much more straightforward. And of course, most importantly, it's branded and built with today's standards and today's goals.
All right, good. Well, let's let, we have Mary's question?
Actually, Lisa asked the same question I was going to ask.
Okay, then Matt has a question here.
Hey, guys, again, thank you very much. Exciting for Casa Grande and exciting for Arizona. And just so everybody knows, I know these guys wish they could be here, they've been here many times, we've met them, I've met them, they're very solid companies, so it's going to be a great partner for the city of Casa Grande. And interesting thing is, if you heard what he said, the last refinery built in the United States is older than my wife, so I mean, that's, you know. Older than, older than, you know. Yeah, exactly. No, but older than me, just kidding. But thank you, guys. But I want to hear a little bit more about the overpass you were talking about. Where is that coming and do you have any more information on that at the time, at this time?
Hal, why don't you address that one? Yeah, let me talk about that just a minute. As you might imagine, there'll be quite a few trucks in and out of the facility, not as many as Walmart and their warehouse, but a number of trucks, day and night, moving in and out of our facility, carrying gasoline. You know, Tom talked about, we're really focused on safety and really focused on maintaining this relationship with the city that is, we don't really interfere with the day-to-day activities going on in the city. So as we began to look at, how would we mobilize trucks across the facility to the stations in Phoenix and Tucson, Yuma, Flagstaff, you know, what roads would they take and how would they get in and out of the city? Basically, the missing piece is the unobstructed route north. Trucks would have to leave the facility and come through downtown Casa Grande, which I don't want gasoline crossing railroad tracks, even though they do it all around the country and they do it very safely. I just, if we can avoid that, it'd be very beneficial, I think, to the relationship, to the comfort of the community, to not put our trucks in a situation like that. But what that means is, we would have to go all the way down to Interstate 8, and then out to 10, and then back to Phoenix, around the city, or out to A and then down and around the west side of the city. So when you start looking at efficiency and productivity and safety and trying to calculate all of the best solutions, is to try to find a way across the railroad track to the north, which really facilitates getting quickly out of town safely without crossing the tracks and crossing a major highway like Maricopa Highway. So we have talked about this for a number of months, and really feel like it's something that we really need to push forward as fast as we can and as much as we can. It would also help construction traffic, if it was done quickly, but I don't think we can have it done quickly in town before construction starts. But hopefully, by the time operations starts, we could have the right groups come together to help fund the roadway and the bridge, and really do it to the quality extent that we need to be able to manage truck traffic in and out of town. And we've also talked with the mayor and with the city manager relative to what support it really gives to industrial corridor here, because we will have a lot of follow-on businesses that come into the city to support our business. And we want to be able to settle them in that industrial corridor where we are also. So we're really trying to look at future development and the best mobility, the safest way in and out of it.
Hal, one thing I should add to that is that there's a federal program called the Build Grant. Solicitation came out for it not very long ago. Park Republic jumped on that, and both the city and the county, I believe, and I think Park's here tonight, have had several meetings on it. And I think that I've spoken with the members of the congressional delegation about it. This is being very well-received there, and I would say there's quite a good chance at any end you can get, I think, maximum $25 million grant. The overpass might cost 50 or 60 million, or definitely probably closer to 60. The railroad will kick in, we will wind up contributing, and this will be, there'll be a lot of revenue, you know, coming out of the project for us. I think it's looking to me as though there are ways to get this built largely with funds. And it'll be a great help to everyone, not just us and not just our follow-on businesses, but the other businesses in that industrial corridor.
All right, good, thank you. And I think Donna McBride also has a question.
Yes, good morning, good evening, George. I just had a follow-up, because you did clarify about the security versus, but on the fire department that you're talking about, are you saying that the fire personnel would be certified the same as a regular firefighter?
Yeah, that would cer... Oh, sorry. Yeah, that would certainly be the intent of the, you know, certified firefighters. You know, there's some specialized training that goes along with industrial firefighting, and I'm not sure how many of the firefighters have that, but there's schools that you go to to have that certification. But they would be, you know, we'd have a staff that would consist of those individuals, as long as people who could be, you know, like paramedics as well. So they would be similarly trained, I would say. I hesitate to say they'd have all the same training as maybe the fire departments there would, but that would be their job. They wouldn't be operators, they wouldn't have responsibility for maintenance. They would be the core people who would direct the responders to an event.
Okay, thank you.
Given the fact that we would train personnel to operate the facility also to be incipient responders, they would be the people who would have the background and the training to respond.
All right, thank you, guys. Bob Huddleston also has a question.
Yes, sir. Speaking on behalf of our citizens that would be excited about this project, what opportunities do you see to recruit, train, and hire locally?
We're all about that. We would love to get as local involved in and much longer training as we possibly can. We intend to have a joint program with Central Arizona College. We've met with Dr. Jackson, who we have a huge follow-up, woman is incredible. And we will have a joint training program. Ultimately, we, as I think Hal mentioned, we intend to do our training in Casa Grande for our other facilities. This is, we don't intend to stop with this plan in Casa Grande. This is an important development, potentially important to the country, actually. But as we build other facilities, we intend to make this our mothership, if you will, for training. But again, you know, we look forward to speaking in schools. We hope to raise aspirations of kids who may have never thought about a career in chemical engineering, to think about doing something different. We're thinking, we've already spoken with the universities about mentoring programs. There's a great opportunity here. This is frankly the kind of thing that doesn't really cost anything, but we're delighted, and so why wouldn't we do it? But that's very high on our list, and it's something that we're already thinking about.
Thank you.
The other thing, Tom, is there will be, as you said, two thousand construction workers at the peak of construction activity, and some of those people will come in with requisite training, but we will set up training schools, not only for the operators and engineers that will need during our operating of the facility, but also the construction workers. And that'll be general laborers that are on site, pipe fitters, and the welders, and the electricians, and the all the way up to highly technical control systems. So a wide array of talent needed, both in the construction of the facility and in the operational facility. So it's not just one level of people we look for, but it is a broad spectrum of people that will be looking for.
Thank you. Mr. Powell also has a question.
Well, listen, I think you've got everybody excited about the possibility and convinced that this would be a win-win. I know that in the past, we had talked about having a route around the city of Casa Grande, and part of it was I-8, part of it was I-10, part of it was Val Vista, and part of it was Montgomery. But the idea of having to have, like, maybe Burris cross the tracks and go on down to the industrial area, which sure saves a lot of traffic through the city, would be good for truckers. It also would, the people that live along Cottonwood Lane have long complained about the truck traffic and the noises and those type of things, and we've never been able to do anything with it. So maybe that's a project we could work with you and set up something like that that would take traffic on down south and over the railroad tracks. But Tom, I want to congratulate again for doing such a good job with the residents and property owners that would be south of this project. And they're very, very enchanted with Tom, so Tom's always welcome down to visit any of them. They had a good experience with him, so that would be my comment.
I got to tell you, that was no chore, I really enjoyed it.
Well, I know, they expect you to come by and have lunch or breakfast with them when they're...
Hey, I want to move in down there.
There you go.
There's some nice people anywhere.
They'll put you to work feeding those horses and stuff, though.
A lot of work.
Yes, they do. Well, listen, as I say, I'm excited about it, I think it's really a good idea, and I think that it also leads us into the ability to maybe do some things, like we've talked about trying to cross the tracks and maybe take it down Burris, and have all those trucks not have to come through town.
Hey, Tom, Hal, thank you, guys. I know, actually, the entire council is excited about this. They will be, too, the citizens will be, too, moving forward. I think it's a great project and really adds to our industrial area over on the west side of town. I was looking at the economic impact numbers, and they're huge. So hopefully, we'll get some of that information out into the paper as well. I'm sure they're going to report some of that. It's pretty exciting, pretty exciting numbers, so thank you very much. Did anybody else have any other questions?
No.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to comment on the water part of it. I'm very happy that you're going to be able to produce a sizable amount of water on the nation. And I think that we need to work out, which is probably already done or will be done, a fair price, that there would be an accelerator tied to. The water rates in Arizona and price of waters is definitely going to be headed upward as we go through this shortage. But as I say, that would be something that we could look into, and it needs to be fair for you and fair for us, so that would be, that'd be good for both ends of this.
Anything else, Larry?
My daddy, my daddy used to take the business, it's not like baseball, all sides, you got to win.
Mr. Rains?
Members of the council, I just want to thank Tom, Hal, and George. It's been a privilege getting to know the individuals of their team and can tell the group and the community that, I don't know that I've met a more fair group as we're, in fact, evaluating, as they were doing their due diligence on Casa Grande and ultimately meeting with our team to determine whether or not Casa Grande would be a location that they could... they could, in fact, build their first plant in Arizona. And so just to make sure that everybody's clear, I know that Tom mentioned this during his presentation, there is an affluent purchase agreement that we are working on with them as well as I anticipate having a pre-annexation and development agreement that will be forthcoming to the council. Obviously, we'll be negotiating those separately. They came to a point in the project where they felt that an announcement in our community, which we, the mayor and I absolutely loved, was now. It was, the timing was right. And so just want to thank you, gentlemen, for all of your efforts in selecting Casa Grande.
Yes.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Rains, is you in discussion of the city council's strategic plan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am going to ask Ms. Leah to hand out a copy of the revised document that I've been working on. But as, and as they're doing that, I want to give the residents a bit of a context as to what I'm passing out to the mayor and council. Roughly two and a half years ago, the mayor and council and city staff met to develop a strategic planning document that, which is the first that we've had in several years to really use as a guiding tool for the organization. I felt, and I think the mayor and council agrees, that the process has proven to be very beneficial. But we've gone through a couple of fiscal years and felt that it would be appropriate for us to at least revisit the content of the plan and come up with some potential revisions that can be incorporated into the document and can be utilized for staff as we're developing our fiscal year '21 annual budget. Really, the budget is the policy document that ultimately where items and actions are achieved. And so what I've handed out to the mayor and council is the revised strategic plan based on a retreat that staff had with council about a month and a half ago. I am not going to go, due to the time that we have left, I am not going to go one item by item. But I thought I could just give a quick little overview, Mayor. And ultimately, my end goal is going to be to ask all of you to review this.
I did it the State of the City.
Right, and the mayor had covered, had utilized the majority of it during the State of the City. Ultimately, asking all of you to review this document that does have even some minor corrections from what I had provided to the mayor, minor changes, and get your feedback. But just a couple of components that I think are important for everybody to understand. When we went into the planning, strategic planning process five years ago, we knew that we needed a fluid document, something that could be revisited on a regular basis, not one that would be a long-term plan. With the way that things change in today's environment, we needed something that was more, was more fluid. And so I believe that we, I believe that as we went into the retreat to revisit this, there was good foundation. There were still a number of items. But we have slightly modified our Rose statement, and you'll see the actual revisions there. And we also have added to our list of focus areas, we've added a component that is specific to economic opportunities, and we've added workforce development under education, and we've created a new component called healthy and safe communities. And the mayor did absolutely speak about that at his State of the City. What the primary change that we've made, mayor and council, to the goals reflect those that we discussed during the retreat. And then what you'll find is, rather than say year 1, 2, 3, 4, restarting that, I've essentially tried to identify those action items and the fiscal year that we would begin to attack them. And so if you have any, if you have any specific questions tonight, I'll be more than happy to entertain them. Otherwise, if you'll take a look at this and if you have any questions or comments that you would like me to incorporate into the document, I'll certainly get that done. My goal is to begin to release this to our staff as we're finalizing, as we're working on our budgets, so they understand what the revisions are, they better understand those revisions that have been made. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd entertain any questions.
I want to echo my comments from before. Such a good job by you and the staff, Larry. And this is, you know, I said it, but too many strategic plans I've seen that you make a strategic plan and then it's just sitting there, figuratively, literally on the shelf. And this one, and everything we do, everything you do, everything staff does ties it to one of our pillars of our strategic plan. So I mean, that to me is fantastic and it keeps it at the forefront of everyone, so good, good job, I mean, good job by you guys. I mean, it's really just great to see it all tied back, you know, so we keep in that same direction.
Mr. Powell?
I just had a question about the fiscal year '21 through '23 improvements to Florence Street. Does that include from Florence Boulevard all the way down, Larry, or do you know?
Which is that?
That would be fiscal year '21, '23.
Under which? Under fiscal?
Is it under the economic opportunities?
FY '21, '23, and it is under...
No, Mr. Powell, that is, in fact, that's one of the reasons I handed out to all of you to review. That was actually an item that we had in fiscal year '20 that the mayor and council just voted on a couple of weeks ago.
That's what I thought.
So I need to get that removed.
I was so tickled when you did it. I didn't want you to change it.
It's under the quality of life, all the way on the bottom.
It's a blight, under blight removal kind of stuff, so.
We will definitely update that.
Okay.
Did you find it, Donna? Yep, the Florence Boulevard.
Okay, anybody else? Wait a minute.
It is.
I can't sing its praises anymore than that.
I'll make one comment.
Yes, sir.
The legislature at the state had broached allowing junior colleges to go ahead and create a baccalaureate program where they could give those. That was defeated, unfortunately, by the legislature, which mostly lives in the Maricopa County area, where it's not a problem for them. But outside of Maricopa County, it's a problem and it would really be beneficial. So maybe we can get our lobbyists to take a look at that and try to twist some arms.
Yeah, maybe county by county, that's a good idea.
We absolutely, as staff, issued our support for that bill, obviously, because of the goals and objectives. And I do apologize for the misspelling. I think in the report that I gave to the mayor and council, I said the bachelorette.
Bachelorette.
It's been a crazy couple of days.
And we didn't catch that. I know, I did it. I read it, but of course I didn't even pay attention.
We had a department we weren't aware of.
All right, any other comments, questions? All right, then we'll stand adjourned. Let's, we'll start at 5 after.